Good evening Wakefield, welcome to our town council meeting of Monday, May 13th, 2024. I call this meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three, attendance. We have all seven councilors in attendance in studio this evening, including our two newest councilors, Councilor Doug Butler and Councilor John Carney. So, welcome to both of you. Thank you for stepping up to serve and look forward to serving with you here on the council. We will move to item number four, which is public engagement. I know we had one submission online. Sheri, do we have Mr. Miller online?
Jonathan, he is not online at the moment, no.
Okay. Well, just before I read his comments submitted, is there any additional public comment either in studio or online?
Nothing online.
Okay. Well, Mr. Miller, I think did intend to speak, though. He did submit some written comment as well. So, just for the record, Mr. Miller wrote, "Because many residents have no confidence in the planning board or its selected sub-team to address the MBTA zoning plan in an open and collaborative manner, I would like to ask what the town council's plan is to help move things in a positive direction to advance a plan that stands a chance of being accepted by a now skeptical citizenry in order to achieve compliance." So, we will enter that in the record. Just for the benefit of the public, I do expect that we will have another MBTA communities' compliance plan in front of town meeting in the fall, and more to come on what that process will be in the future. Any other public engagement? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to item number five A, Farm Street Parking Restrictions. Do we have Lieutenant Anderson online?
We do. Bringing him right over.
Excellent. Thank you.
Hey Joe.
All right. Good evening Lieutenant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for adding me to your agenda. And congratulations to the two newly elected town councilors. I look forward to working with you. Mr. Chair, we have a recommendation that was kind of of a more urgent matter for our high school. As you know, the first phase of the construction has begun at the Memorial High School. And I think they knew that there were going to be some parking challenges with that first phase. We did see quite a bit of spill-over parking into both legal and illegal parking spaces on Farm Street. So, we're trying to help them alleviate that situation temporarily until they can construct the new upper lot. So, what was proposed by the school, and I agree it would be a help for them temporarily, is to alleviate the current restrictions on the east side of Farm Street that are currently no parking from 7:00 AM to 8:30 AM. So, parking is allowed there at other times. We don't really have many issues other times, but obviously it was put in place to help keep Farm Street not as congested during school hours. I think if we kept those spaces available, if we temporarily alleviated those restrictions and bagged the signage, and then placed cones where parking is not allowed at any time, like no parking here at corner. There's a couple of other time restrictions there. And then as you get closer to Water Street, obviously there's no parking close to Water Street. I think that would help them with their spill-over parking. It would give them a place to go where it isn't really as impactful temporarily. So, my recommendation would be to lift those restrictions temporarily until the end of September, September 30th. That would give them the developer time to finish their upper lot, give them a place that's a little bit more desirable for on-street parking than some of the other spaces that they've been taking, which is on the west side of Farm Street. It impacts people's driveways, a couple of the cul-de-sac, Sayla Kennedy Circle and Woodville Circle. If they're parking there illegally, it can definitely be impactful for sightline visibility and create a safety issue there. So, we're trying to potentially give them a place to go temporarily while they're getting through the first phase of their construction and dissuading them from parking in places that would be impactful to our citizens. So, that in a nutshell is the recommendation. I did provide a map that might be a little bit more clear in understanding where the current restrictions are and what we would be looking to lift temporarily. So, if you have that in front of you, all the orange would be the new available parking spaces. We would ask the developer to cone off all the illegal parking spaces or spaces where it would impact visibility from entering and exiting driveways and intersecting streets. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Great. Thank you Lieutenant. And just to confirm, the expected reopening of the upper lot is September?
So, they're hoping for even before September, but they didn't want to have to come back and, you know, bring us before you again, and then have that gap in time. So, I figured if we got them through the end of September, I think that would be more reasonable to have them construct that lot and then get them off of Farm Street completely.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Council Drabrowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you Lieutenant on this. Quick question. The design that we're talking about here, that's really an issue more during the school year, right? So, come June, will the need be lessened?
I would assume it would. I assume it would be lessened. I don't know if you wanted to consider going back to it. I think, I don't think they see much on-street parking from that hour and a half during the summer anyway. So, we could carry it through the summer, or that would be acceptable too. I mean, we're not removing the signage, we're just bagging them. So, if you wanted to cut it off at the end of the school year and then restart at the beginning, that's definitely an option as well.
I mean, I guess in practical terms, I would imagine that a parker's preference would be in the parking lot anyway, right? So, I can't imagine people are going to be parking on Farm Street if given the choice with a line spot in the parking lot.
No doubt, yeah. These are people that, you know, they're getting there a little bit late, or maybe even right on time, but all the spaces are taken right now. So, I agree with you. In the summer, it's probably, it wouldn't really matter either way. If they were bagged and available, you probably wouldn't see much on-street parking there for that hour and a half. You know, during all of the times, anyone can park there anyway. So, I doubt that it would be impactful during the summer months.
And just the other question with that too is, understand that people will be mindful and cognizant of, you know, any kind of traffic backups of any sort that could be created by the parking during those hours, which obviously we had, you know, prohibited for a reason. What can residents expect relative to that, at least while school's still in session?
As far as the backup goes?
Right.
I mean, it's a tough area in general anyway. I think, I don't know how much more noticeable it'll be. I think once the two schools have been completed and we see those new roundabouts that were approved not too long ago, I think that's when really it's going to be more noticeable that traffic's flowing better there. So, unfortunately for the foreseeable future, Farm Street's going to have, it's going to have traffic during peak hours. And a lot of it has to do with the streets not being lined up properly at the intersection of the Hemlock and Farm. And it's just, it's not a great layout as it stands right now. So, I don't think it's going to make it that much worse. It already isn't really that great during school hours anyway. So, and I hope it would actually prevent some queuing of people trying to circle around and pull in three-point turns and things like that if they actually do have a place to park. So, that would hopefully prevent some of that.
I think it makes a lot of practical sense. And in terms of the real impact, I think it'll probably be quite minimal, you know, when we're talking about what school's out. So, thank you for the thoughtful analysis, though.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the recommendation of the Trackfic Advisory Committee with regard to Farm Street Parking Restrictions?
Still moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you Lieutenant. Appreciate you coming here, especially on short notice, given the urgency of the issue here, and I hope we see some results from this.
Thank you as always. I appreciate it.
All right. Have a good night. Moving on to item five B is the intermunicipal agreement between the Town of Wakefield and the Town of Reading for Animal Control. Mr. Mayo?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. In fiscal year '21, after a retirement at Town Hall, we kind of revamped how we were handling our animal control services. We used to have a salaried employee. We went on to only pay for each activity, meaning, you know, each call was $50 and what have you. And then Reading came to me and said they wanted to jump on our bandwagon and work with us. So, we went from a cost of about $77,000 in fiscal year '21 to about $40,000, $41,000 now. We entered into a three-year agreement with Reading in 2021. That has worked out very well. Where our direct savings are, is not only is the whole cost lower anyway, but our direct savings are that the on-call for the weekends is split between the two communities evenly. So, we save money there for not having someone on-call for the weekends. And we pay for any of our services in Wakefield, and Reading pays for any of theirs in Wakefield. As I said, it's worked out very well. We have two very capable animal control offices, both that are certified by the Mass Department of Animal Resources, M DAR. And they get certificates every year, and they actually have to take, keep up with their professional courses and things like that. This has worked very well. I'd suggest that we up with Reading for another three years to work together on this. Each, either community can jump out if they need to, like we have in this, I think it's a 60-day period. And both the Reading Town Council and our Town Council have approved of the agreement. So, happy to answer any question.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, we will take a motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement between the Town of Wakefield and Town of Reading for Animal Control Services?
Still moved.
Seconded.
Further discussion? I will just comment. This is an area, I mean, it's not big dollars, but it is an area of improvement. It is an area where we've been able to maintain, if not improve, the services at a lower cost. So, appreciate, Mr. Mayo, your forethought on this one, and glad to see this one move ahead. There being no further discussion, we will take a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much. And, Mr. Chairman, our administrative assistant will load this up onto DocuSign and send it out to us and to Reading. So, it'll be nice and easy to get it all done.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you Sheri.
Thank you very much.
Item five C is an open meeting law complaint. Mr. Mullen, I'll let you take this one.
Yes, on May 3rd, we received an open meeting law complaint from Scott McCauley concerning the conduct of this board. This has to do with the climate leaders entry on the agenda for the town council meeting of April 8th. And as you know, whenever an open meeting law complaint is received by any public body, that body has to receive it, acknowledge it in open session, and decide what to do with it. I would propose that here, as in the past, you delegate the matter to me, and I will respond appropriately to Mr. McCauley and to the Attorney General.
Great. Is there a motion to that effect?
Still moved.
Seconded.
Any discussions or questions for Mr. Mullen? All right. Seeing, Council Drabrowski?
Talk, Council Mullen, can you just explain, just in brief detail, the issue here is obviously different than what we dealt with at town meeting, because open meeting law doesn't apply to town meeting. It does apply here. Do you see the way in which that agenda item was identified as consistent with the law, or should there have been greater specificity with that?
So, I'm going to need to go look into it a little further in this respect. The significance of the agenda is that it puts you on notice of, that an item may be considered by the public body. So, if it, you needn't do more than identify the, as the statute uses the term, item that is to be discussed. And typically, such a description needn't be more than a couple of words. On the other hand, if it's so obscure that a reader of average intelligence couldn't figure out what the board is going to do, that's a problem. So, the real question is, in my mind, whether the term "climate leaders" on the agenda was sufficiently descriptive to put the public on notice. And part of that analysis, I think, is that in Wakefield, unlike most communities, we couple our agenda on the town website with a full collection of the materials that the town council will review at their meeting. And if those materials sufficiently identify what climate leaders are, I think, taken together, the two things more than satisfy the purpose of the statute.
I'll just say, as a person, I think of, hopefully, reasonable intelligence. I, debatable. I didn't like the way that we handled this. I think that a lot of other issues that have this kind of an impact are, were dealt with in more than one meeting. So, I would have preferred to have had this on our radar and then addressed or voted on at a subsequent meeting. I think that's just a better practice for us going forward. And so, I think what we've done historically on a number of items that come to mind, I frankly didn't myself know what climate leaders was, and the material kept changing up to the day of. So, I just think as a general rule, we should probably set some sort of a standard going forward to make sure that we're clear enough amongst the seven of us, and obviously for the public to understand as well. And I don't think this achieved that this past time.
Do you have any other comments on the motion on the table, which is to refer the complaint to Mr. Mullen? I mean, comments taken. I just want to make sure we stick to the motion.
Yeah, I was going to ask about, you know, the times that, I don't know whether this is something you don't want to, a question to be asked on. That's why I'm looking at you kind of funny, because, you know, I was curious as to whether I could ask Council Mullen as to whether, in the past, we have sometimes said vote anticipated and not anticipated. Is there a better practice? Is there, is that something that we could do to make it clearer, at least to the public and to the council members?
Mr. Mr.
Vote intended or vote expected, we have used at times, and other times, we have not. So, and also, you know, under the heading of presentation update, I was a little, you know, I would be a little bit less inclined to perk up that something's just an update or a presentation as opposed to a vote expected.
So, here, again, Wakefield goes above and beyond. There's no requirement of putting vote intended. For that matter, there's no requirement of saying executive session intended. All you have to do is identify the item to be discussed. But we do, and I think it's appropriate, put more detail than we minimally have to into the warrant, I'm sorry, into the agenda. I think that the issue here really is the familiarity to the public of the term "climate leaders." And I think it's not so much a question of, was the public put on notice that there might be a vote? Because everything on your agenda is notice that there might be a vote. It's rather, what is this thing, climate leaders? If it's very well-known, then there's no need to define it. If it's not too well-known, but it makes sense in context with the materials that are posted with it, I think that's probably adequate. If it's poorly understood, and the materials either weren't posted at the same time, or were inadequate, then I think it was a problem, and probably should have been done differently.
Okay.
Now, what flows from that?
Yep.
Really, at worst, we'd just do it over. Which the board could do at any time, anyway.
Exactly. Right. Thank you.
Further questions for Mr. Mullen? All right. Seeing none. Again, the motion is to refer the open meeting complaint to Mr. Mullen for response. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Can I make a comment outside of that motion? Just want to give everyone an update that the reason that was added to our agenda was because it had a due date that was pretty imminent. And last week, we got word that we actually were approved. So, putting together and taking that vote proved fruitful, because we will have planning assistance approved from the state to create our climate, become a climate leader. So, there was a reason that it needed to be done on that date, and it worked out. We're getting money from the state. So, it worked out.
Thank you. Moving on. Item number five D, ALS Awareness Month. So, as individuals may be aware, May is ALS Awareness Month, and we did receive a resident request to adopt a proclamation declaring May as ALS Awareness Month here in Wakefield. I won't read the proclamation in whole. It is in the packet, but we'll take a motion to adopt the proclamation as presented.
Still moved.
Seconded.
Any comments?
I would just note that, you know, ALS has a special meaning for this town council, given the late, you know, great Peter May, who, you know, we all miss very much, and who fought a heroic battle against ALS, and was literally participating in these meetings until very close to his passing. So, I think that it's especially poignant that we would recognize this devastating, devastating disease that impacts so many people, especially someone really close to us.
Absolutely. Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of adopting a resolution? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Excellent. Moving on to item number six A is a pledge of license for Daxson LLC DBA Boss Mama. I believe we have Boss Mama here. So, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and letting us know why you're here today.
Good evening all. My name is Robert Bell. I'm an attorney from Melrose at the law firm of Bell and Izzy, and I do represent Wendy. I'm going to let her speak to this. It's, we really just were treated so well the first time that we decided we were that. Small glitch, and we're trying to cover it over.
Good evening. I am Wendy Galini, AKA Boss Mama. Good evening, Ms. Dalton and the rest, and welcome to the two new members here. Yes, so, as we know, we were here a little under two months ago, which we passed an unanimous vote for our liquor license to move forward with the wonderful establishment we're opening. However, I just, we wanted to come back to get an approval on the pledge. And what that means for people is our financer, Northern Bank, which is a wonderful lender in the community, it's considered part of the assets. And so, what the pledge means in layman's terms is the highly unlikely situation in which I, we ever defaulted on our loan, and the bank had to now sell the business. It would allow them the opportunity to do it as if they were myself in doing that. So, you know, to cross the Ts and the Is, we wanted to make sure that the council moved forward, that we would add the pledge to it. So, it would be part of the rest of the assets of the business itself.
Any questions from the council? Council Carney?
Question, if in fact, you defaulted, obviously nobody would like to see that, and the bank took possession of that asset, what is their responsibility to the town in the licensing?
Well, it would, presumably, they would want to transfer the license to a successor company that, you know, was willing to purchase the assets from the bank. The bank would be able to participate in the transfer. But like any license transfer, where alcohol is related, it's still going to be subject to getting passed by you, approved by the town, and getting approved by the ABCC. So, you know, it's, I think the idea is, you know, Wendy's loan, they did let her know that this was going to be an all-assets financing, but they never specified about the pledge, that it had to be specifically pledged. But, you know, how banks are, all assets mean all assets. On top of that, she signs personally. And it's not just the Northern Bank, because the Small Business Administration is also involved, who are notorious, you know, for covering every possible scenario of security. So, you know, Wendy's obligations haven't changed in any way. It just is going to be easier paperwork-wise, if the bank forecloses on her and takes over, that they can participate in something. But, you know, really, liquor approvals are really de novo, you know, coming from the start. Everybody has to qualify on their own, regardless of whether it's a transfer or a new license.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, Council Butler?
Probably more a question for Council Mullen. Do we, have we come across this ever before in terms of SBA loans, people needing their liquor licenses pledged against it?
Oh, yes.
That we have to approve it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. So, this is not, this is not an abnormal thing. We're not setting precedent.
It's more the norm than the exception, I'd say.
Okay. Oh, so, this was just missed. Okay. No worries.
Further questions? All right. Seeing none, I will take a motion to approve the pledge of license as presented for Daxson LLC.
Still moved.
Seconded.
Further discussion? Seeing none. Oh, please, go ahead, Council.
Do we have a sense of opening date?
Ooh, that's a great question.
Everyone's very excited, so.
We are very excited as well, and we will start to paper the hall soon to let you know. We are hoping and anticipating, if I drive this train as safely but as strongly as possible, we're hoping somewhere in the midsummer. We will get a better feel for things as things start moving along. But, and again, the attribute goes to the people that are able to answer the 172 questions I may have from Ms. Dalton every single day. She's the amazing partner in which you have with the community. So, we are hoping for that, which will be great. I would like to get there by the time for you, the most incredible parade that in the whole United States of America. I love that parade, but if not, hopefully soon after.
Great.
So, we look forward to it. Thank you very much.
I just want to echo a comment you made, and just recognize our clerk, Ms. Dalton, who serves as the licensing clerk for the town. There is a lot of paperwork that comes into, as you well know, that goes into getting a license in any community in Massachusetts. And Sheri does a great job of shepherding everyone through the process. And so, I hope your example of your positive experience working with Sheri is an example to other prospective businesses coming to Wakefield.
And again, I'm a seasoned operator.
We're here to help, and we've got, you know, a fantastic resource in Town Hall to do so.
It is. I'm an experienced operator, and even I, but there's still an awful lot. And the thing is, is it was laid out from when you even go online, and you start to look at, there is a what-to-do checklist for people. It is very comprehensive, and we set everything we go. But, again, when you are doing a lot of things, it's about the order of things as they happen. And I'm often amazed, and I've said this to her more than once on the email, and I was just like, because it's very concise, very clear. You know, I don't hear the eye roll online, because, you know, sometimes you ask questions that they, they already know and understand. And it has been an incredible experience. It really has. It's, it, you know, it, everything like this, anything that's worth doing has its challenges, but it's not for these kind of situations. And I do, and I say that all the time. Ms. Dalton, she's, you know, it's, but everybody, every department, all my subcontractors, they've been in and out, a lot of people, and they're like, few of them have never done business in the Town of Wakefield before, and they're very happy to do so now. So, thank you very much.
We're thrilled to hear that. Thank you.
Appreciate that. It has to be said.
Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the change of license, a pledge of license? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you so much, and good luck, and we hope.
And thank you. Thank you very much.
Hope you'll be able to enjoy the establishment this July.
We certainly will. Going back to work on the menu design right now.
All right. Item number six B is a farmer's market winery license All right, item number six B is a farmer's market winery license for Bliss Point Meadery. Sherry, do we have the team from Bliss Point online?
Well, Jonathan, he was on, but he disappeared, so I'll let you know if he gets back on.
Okay, well, skip over that just for a moment, let's move on to them. Item six C, farmer's market winery license for House Bear Brewing. Do we have anyone online for House Bear?
No, nobody's here for them.
Okay, were we expecting them? I know Bliss Point was coming in.
Yeah, Bliss Point was going to come in. House Bear hasn't been on the last couple of years. We've approved them, so I wasn't expecting them.
Okay, so I will ask for a motion to approve the sales license for House Bear Brewing at the Wakefield Farmer, Wakefield Farmer's Market as presented in the packet.
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. And again, to clarify, this is a sales license, not a sampling license. Is there, are there any questions from the council? Nope, Counselor Butt?
Steve, usually, sometimes when we have these, we have the chief come and tell us, but there were no problems last year, right?
No problems for the last two years, I think they've been there.
Great.
No problems with any of the licenses. As part of the process, it does go through the police anyway, and they would have let us know.
Okay, great.
All right, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the license for House Bear Brewing? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Item six D is a one-day liquor license for Happy Hostess at Your Service on... Hang on while my item loads on my screen?
May 23rd.
May 23rd, thank you, do we have a motion?
Moved to approve the one-day liquor license.
Seconded.
Any questions or discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Sherry, anything from Bliss Point yet?
Not yet.
Do we need them?
We don't, but I know they were coming on, so we'll, we may come back to them, we'll go through a couple other things. If they're not on, we can take action though without them. Let's move on to item seven A, appointments to the Veterans Advisory Board. It looks like we had one applicant. Do we have a motion to appoint Mr. Giacobi?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Item seven B, we had similarly one applicant for the Human Rights Commission. I'm going to butcher this name, which I apologize for, Hion Leon. Do we have a motion to appoint this individual to the Human Rights Commission?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines. Sherry, this puts them at six voting members, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
So their quorum's going to be four out of six. Boy, it'd be nice if they could get a seventh person, so the quorum could be four out of seven.
They're crying.
Thank you, that's all I have.
So to that point, I want to mention for the public that we do still have open positions on both of these boards, Veterans Advisory and the Human Rights Commission. And so, please, if you do have any interest, you know, we're a town that runs on volunteers, and the more volunteers we have, the easier the work is for everyone. So if there is any interest, please reach out to Town Hall. You can reach out to the chairs of either the Veterans Advisory Board or the Human Rights Commission, or to Ms. Dalton herself in Town Hall. And again, we'd love to get some more applicants to consider there. Further discussion on this one? Seeing none, the motion is to appoint Hion Leon to the Human Rights Commission, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Item eight is donations. Item eight A is council on aging, donations in the order of $445. Do we have a motion to accept with thanks?
So moved.
Seconded.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Item eight B, donations in the amount of $50 to the youth council. Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Seconded.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And item eight C, the library, we have donations in the amount of $5,605. Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines. $5,000 of that donation comes from Diane Humphrey in honor of her mother, Claire Humphrey, so I thought it was worth taking 30 seconds to talk about who Claire Humphrey was. Diane Humphrey currently lives in Charlotte, North Carolina. She donated $5,000 to the BB Library in honor of her mother, Claire Humphrey. Diane loves libraries, and the first library she visited was the BB Library with her mother when Diane was a young girl who was raised in Wakefield. Claire Humphrey was born in Wakefield in 1927 and passed away in 2012. She was a lifelong Wakefield resident. She was married to Kenneth Humphrey. She had two daughters, Diane Humphrey and Deborah Lehe. She enjoyed dancing, singing, decorating her home, hosting family and friends, and was a member of St. Joseph's Catholic Church. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. It's always nice to hear the stories of how some of these donations, these generous donations come to be, I appreciate you looking into that. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving donations as presented? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right, item number nine, we have four sets of minutes, Town Council minutes for approval, minutes from the April 22nd, 2024 Town Council meeting, the April 22nd, 2024 Town Council Executive Committee meeting, executive session meeting, excuse me, the May 2nd, 2024 Town Council meeting, and the May 2nd, 2024 Town Council Executive Session meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes as drafted?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving those four sets of minutes? Opposed? Abstentions? Great, so we have five, I think we had five opposed, sorry, Mr. Carney, I didn't see if you had raised your hand to approve.
I was on the board.
Okay, so we have approved a vote, vote of five zero with two abstentions, Sherry, for Counselors Carney and Butler.
Thank you.
We watched, but we weren't paying that much attention.
That's fine.
Well, you didn't see two of them. Exactly.
All right, let's move back to, and appreciate everyone's patience as we jump around, item six B, do we have Bliss Point on at this point, Sherry?
Yes, we do.
Excellent.
Hi Jeff, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great, well, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and telling us why you're here?
My name is Jeff Benudie, I'm the owner of Bliss Point Meadery, and we are looking forward to participating in the farmer's market as a mead vendor. We did so last year, and we would like to repeat that again this year.
Any questions from the council about Bliss Point or the license request? Counselor Butler?
In general, what is the maximum alcohol content in your meads?
The maximum is 16%, but our products range from 6.9 up to that, and most of them fall in the 12% range, like a standard bottle of wine.
Any other questions? And to clarify again, this is a sales license, not a sampling license. Do we have a motion to approve the license request as presented?
So moved.
The request is for sales and sampling at the market, which is what we did last year.
That is not what we have in our packet.
Oh, I'm sorry, never mind.
It's Wakefield.
Yes, sorry. I have three, I have three town council meetings this evening, I'm sorry.
Oh my goodness. Well, we appreciate you making the rounds and glad you could do so virtually. Counselor Butler, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, can I ask why we can't sample? Why do other towns get to sample and we don't?
When we re-stated the farmer's market approval last year, the police chief was adamant not to have sampling at the market, and it was for a two-year period for the farmer's market. Obviously, people are coming back even though they can't sample, so that wasn't an issue. I imagine this might be an item that might be re-looked at next year in the rules and rigs. But that is in the rules and rigs now, and that's what people apply that.
I will clarify that I do understand that Wakefield is a no-sampling market, and we do not intend to sample. However, I will let you know that we do 28 other farmer's markets, and we sample at every single one of those.
Thank you.
Flat Earth Society, baby.
I'm not sure where to go with that call. All right, so we have a motion on the table to approve the sales license as presented. Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Counselor Dobreski?
I'm not sure if you know this answer. We have, or maybe, Madam Clerk, we have, what, two vendors that would be impacted by sampling this year, or how many?
Yeah, as we know right now, it's, there will be two. It'll be the Bliss Point and the House Bear. And just to clarify, Jeff, you've never sold at the Wakefield Farmer's Market before. We've never like.
That's correct, this is our first time at Wakefield. And truth be told, the reason that we are a vendor at Wakefield is because a winery that you've had in the past named Aranap decided to not participate because the sampling rule was changed.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the license as presented? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. So thank you very much for joining us, particularly given your hectic evening of Town Council and select board meetings. We look forward to seeing you at the farmer's market this summer.
Thank you so much to the board, I look forward to serving the community.
Excellent, have a great night.
All right.
All right, we will move on to item number 10, announcements. Are there any announcements from the council? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines. May is also Stroke Awareness Month, and as all of you know, my wife is a 17-year stroke survivor, so I want to remind everyone of the acronym of the symptoms of stroke, which is FAST, F as in face drooping, A arm weakness, S speech difficulties, and T time to call 911. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Other announcements from the council? Counselor Dobreski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I wanted to recognize our two new members. You won a, it feels like it was a lifetime ago, because we've been through so many weeks since it feels, but you won a very spirited contest, and I think both of you, you know, all three of you ran great campaigns, and it was a very positive spirited contest, so congratulations, looking forward to working with both of you, and I'm glad to have you on board. Thank you also to outgoing Chair Chines and outgoing Vice Chair McLean for your leadership this year too. I know, as Counselor Butt and I can attest to, there is additional, you know, responsibility that comes with leadership of the town council, and I recognize the hours you both have put into it, so thank you both for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further announcements? Counselor Butt?
Just some things for people to be aware of, it is APHA AAPI Heritage Month. The Human Rights Commission has a film festival planned, more information on their website. Also, since we're not meeting for a couple more weeks, reminder that the Pride Progress Flag raising will be June 3rd at 6:00 PM at the Americale Civic.
Civic.
Civic, sorry, Center. Two other things, we just want to thank the Boys and Girls Club for providing childcare at town meeting, thank you for Adam and Anthony and everyone else there for doing that for the two very late nights, we really appreciate it. And then something I'm going to bring up, I'll bring up at the next.
Further announcements? I'll just add a couple of things. So one is for those of us who are in studio today, as you walk into the studio at WCAT, there is a big construction site behind us, which is exciting because we will be doing the official groundbreaking for that construction site for the new Wakefield High School project this coming Friday at 10:00 AM, 10 o'clock in the morning here at the high school. So encourage everyone for the community to come out for that. It really is an exciting milestone, and it doesn't look like much back there right now, but I know I'm really excited to see what will arise out of the construction site there over the next couple of years. Couple other things to make sure folks are aware of, there is a project info session this Wednesday at 6:30 related to the I-95 widening project that the State Highway Department is considering, that is online at 6:30. So anyone who lives in that area who has interest, encourage you to log into that. There is a mental health first aid training coming up, and thanks to our Health and Human Services Department for putting this together. That'll be on Friday, May 31st, from 9:30 to 1:30 at the library. Encourage people to go onto the BB website to sign up for that if you're interested. And then also wanted to mention that I do have my monthly office hours next Tuesday at the library at 6:00, so please stop by and say hello. Any other announcements? All right?
I do want one more thing, I don't really know exactly where it fits, but there has been a lot of discussion in the community about the construction that's happening on North Avenue right now. I know there's been some confusion about what exactly is happening. The information is on our website, there are links to that. One thing that I do think we should perhaps think about is, there had been talk of those removable posts, and it may be, I think, a worthwhile exercise for us to have DPW lay out a small section of those posts initially, to then see if that's something that, to see how people navigate around them, to kind of get a feeling for it versus running them all the way down North Avenue at this point. So I just kind of put that out there for, as an awareness piece, because I know we don't meet for another couple weeks at least, and I think it's something that we should be thinking about. So I just, I'm open to everyone's thoughts, but as the DPW liaison, I can talk with DPW as well about, you know, just having people understand what this looks like, because I think a lot of people are having trouble conceptualizing how that roadway will look post-construction. And I think people, I think people are raising legitimate concerns candidly, so I think the more we can do to help people understand what that project would look like, I think is important.
So I know we will have DPW coming to one of our meetings in the next month or so because of.
Water and sewer rates.
Water and sewer rates, so maybe, Mr. Mayo, if we could plan on an update on that project and kind of continue that discussion when we've got the right people in the room.
And those posts, no matter what, are movable anyway.
Right.
They were never going to be set.
Right, yep.
Great. All right, seeing no further announcements, item number 10.
I actually don't have one, but in case we don't meet prior to this, the FOLQ Annual Dinner is Wednesday, May 29th. Did I steal anybody's thunder on that? No, glad I didn't. There are going to have a presentation on monofilament around the lake, because there have been some instances where some birds get caught in this fish wire that's left around, so I'm looking forward to going to that to learn a little bit, and maybe might bring something back to the council. Things might want to do to make sure that doesn't happen. So that's the 29th, I forget where it is, do you know, Mike?
It's at Bear Hill.
It's at Bear Hill, it's back to Bear Hill, didn't it switch?
Last year it was Crystal.
Crystal, okay, so it's back to Bear Hill to confuse us. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Excellent, sorry about that.
No, no.
Item number 11, we actually do have a couple of matters not anticipated, I know, Counselor Butt, you have one, but one thing I do want to mention is that the MBTA.
You're stealing my thunder.
I'm sorry.
Go for it.
So the MBTA is soliciting input on their capital plan right now, and one of the issues that we have advocated for in Wakefield for a number of years has been handicap accessibility at Wakefield Station, which as anyone who takes the commuter rail knows is not at all handicap accessible. State Representative Kate Lippert-Garabedian has been spearheading an advocacy letter with our legislative delegation, Representative Wong and Senator Lewis, to advocate for the inclusion of an accessibility project at Wakefield Station as part of the capital plan, and she had reached out to us, both sort of asking, and I think rightfully suggesting that we, as a town council, instruct Mr. Mayo to send out a similar letter. This came to us, I think, on Friday after we posted the agenda, the deadline for comment, Steve, is the 16th.
Yes.
So it is a fast turnaround, and so we wanted to bring this up with a request for a motion to authorize Mr. Mayo to send out a letter to the MBTA advocating for the inclusion of an accessibility project at Wakefield Station on behalf of the town council, and Steve, I don't know if there's anything.
No, I was going to say that I have the letter that Representative Lippert-Garabedian did put together with the rest of the delegation, and she is, she's right, she adds, this will be at least the fifth request we've made. at least the fifth request we've made for that station, so. I think I'd also have the Commission on Disabilities, if they're able to squeeze it in as well and get as many as we can, if the council so wishes. But we've sent them before.
I was going to say, I believe we sent one last year and the year before.
Yeah, and the year before, yeah.
This has been kind of a longstanding priority, so--
They're not handicap accessible there?
I'm sorry?
It's not handicap accessible at all?
Nope, no. No, they don't even have the sort of, I don't even think they have, you know, I know you're a commuter rail rider. I don't think they even have the mini ramps that they have at substations.
I don't think so.
No.
It takes up a lot of space, Mr. Chairman. I've worked for the railroad.
Yep.
I'd love to see it happen, but it's going to intervene in some people. It takes a lot to get you up to the height of the railroad, so it's no longer a lift. It's basically getting a ramp long enough to get you up to vehicle height. And I'm picturing the scenario there, and I'm saying, where's that ramp going to go? That's the engineer's job to try to find that. I'd be in favor of it.
So to that end, is there a motion to authorize a letter from--
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carney. Second?
Second. Dead.
Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right, Counselor Butt, I think you had a separate issue.
Yes, I thought you were taking it when you started with the MBTA. So the MBTA is also, has proposed a new commuter rail schedule starting on May 20th. The limited trains to the city with no trains after 7:39 AM, which is not great for anyone, particularly working parents. There's a board meeting on 5/23, which I would hope that we, as the town of Wakefield, would say something, because it affects, you know, we have two commuter rail stations in town. It affects a lot of people who commute to the city. I also would hope that we would write to our delegation and tell them that that's not acceptable. It's also limited shuttle service during this time, so I just, I hope--
Is that the summer schedule?
It is, it's--
Is that what they're calling it?
I think they're calling it a summer schedule with no end date, though. So I think that's what's a little scary. So if we could find out more and then maybe do some advocacy, I don't, to have that be the latest train time in the morning seems a little not really useful for anyone.
I mean, so I will just say, from a parent's standpoint, you know, I mean, when you're talking about during the summer, I mean, people still work during the summer, and, I mean, the very, very earliest that you can drop a child off at camp, like, if you're lucky and you have a camp that starts that early, is 7:30, and that is by no means standard. I mean, usually you're talking 8:00, 8:30, even 9 o'clock, and so I hadn't heard that, but that's really dismaying.
I know we used to have a MBTA liaison, Steve. I don't think we've talked to them in a while. I don't even know who it is, but it would be nice to kind of figure that out through the delegation and kind of, to fully understand what this plan is, and I hope to attend the meeting on the 23rd, and maybe some of us can, too, just to learn more.
Is this a much more, Counselor Butt, much more restrictive than we've had in prior years for a summer schedule?
I don't remember it switching to summer schedule ever. So in the, so I don't know, but I don't, as I take it, I don't remember a summer schedule.
Okay. I mean, I assume it's a cost-saving measure, but, yeah, it sounds, that sounds pretty restrictive.
It's the point of having a train that doesn't run. Counselor Dobrowski?
I think it's also worth pointing out that at a time where there's so much discussion about MBTA communities, the optics are not good to be contracting schedules.
Agreed, yeah.
So, Mr. Mayo, on that item, you know--
Yeah, I'll work with the delegation and see what we can get together on it.
Okay. And I think maybe to the extent, not to speak for a future chair, but, you know, perhaps if we could think about this also as an agenda item at our next meeting, just an update as to what happens at the board meeting and what kind of information we've heard. I also do wonder, sorry, if there's any communication that we should send out as the town, just so people are aware of this.
I can't imagine that most people are.
I don't know. All right, any other matters not anticipated? All right, seeing none, we will move on to item number 12, reorganization. So as my last official duty as chair, I will open the floor for nominations for chair for the coming year. Counselor Dobrowski?
I will nominate current Vice Chair Michael McLean.
Excellent. Nominations do not need to be seconded. Mr. McLean, do you accept?
I do.
Okay. Do we have any further nominations? All right, seeing none, I will take a motion to, what's the word I'm looking for? Elect, sorry. That's the word I'm looking for. Counselor McLean by acclamation is chair. Do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second. Thank you, Mr. Carney. All those in favor? Opposed? And any abstentions?
I abstain.
All right, so motion carries by a vote of five zero with two abstentions. So congratulations, Counselor.
Thank you.
The gavel is yours.
Okay. At this point, it's my first duty. I will entertain a motion for Vice Chair.
I move Ed Dobrowski.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My hand is raised.
Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair McLean. It's my honor and privilege to nominate Counselor Ed Dobrowski Jr. for Vice Chair.
Second.
And will you accept?
I will. Thank you, with thanks.
Any discussion? And I will entertain, it is a motion by proclamation--
A motion to elect Counselor Dobrowski Vice Chair by acclamation. That's my motion.
So moved. Second. All those in favor? We're going to give yourself seven zero. Okay. Right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for your willingness to serve. Couple very brief comments before our next meeting. If people could get back to me relative to, perhaps by email, your current liaisons, whether you're interested in maintaining any of them or changing them. I think at our next meeting, I may propose an agenda item. I don't intend to do a retreat, and I may have an agenda item relative to each counselor perhaps giving maybe two of their items that they're very interested in working on this year, and perhaps what you intend to do to see those items through, if you could think that through. You don't have to, you don't have to give me the second part, but I may ask, okay, and how are we going to get to that point of whatever it is that's important to you during those years, or during the next year? I think we'll-- I second the concerns of what's going on in North Ave that were mentioned by the current Vice Chair. I just eyeball the situation when I'm running it, you know, and it looks pretty narrow. And when you get past the cemetery, sometimes I think when we add the five foot, I assume it's five feet, bike lane--
Five to six.
How far are we going to be moving those double O lines over to the other side of the street, and just how narrow is it going to be? Now, I understand, we all understood that, those numbers, at least those of us who were here to vote on it when we voted on it, but I think, you know, we need to all be considering whether there need to be any potential changes to that, potential tweaks to that setup. And I just intend to have a full and robust discussion. I think we'll also probably have, maybe the first agenda, when I'm chair, would not be the appropriate time for deciding what we're going to do with the next MBTA round, MBTA communities, but perhaps to put it on the agenda for open discussion, so that we can talk about what we, as a unit, foresee. I have my own personal opinions, but they're only mine, you know, to get a view from all seven as to what we think the next process will entail. And then perhaps vote on it at a subsequent meeting, whatever it is we decide to do as a council. I think it's going to be, in my opinion, it's going to be different than it was the last time, but just how different, I'd like all the counselors to be chiming in on. Did you have a question there, Mr. McLean?
Well, yeah, let's see. I have to get through--
Sure, sure. But I don't want to take much time, because this is going to be probably our shortest meeting of the year. So I'll stop it at that point, and if anybody has any other concerns between now and, I think, Steve, it was June 10th we were looking at for the next meeting? I think we had a date on the agenda. Did we not, or did we?
Yeah.
Yes, June 10th.
June 10th. So between now and June 10th, anything else that you want to bring up? Another thing is, I am going to ask all of us this year to try to get materials, I don't intend on meeting with Steve every week. I intend on meeting with him possibly the Wednesday morning before the following Monday meeting. And I would ask everyone to try to discipline themselves, and it's not easy, especially if something does, I'm not talking about something that comes up last minute, but to try to get anything in that needs to be in by close of business Tuesday, because Friday is a limited day for our employees, and, you know, I would hope that we get agendas a little bit quicker than maybe like Friday, when we have a half-day of town employees, and if you're working like many of us are, then you wind up really coming to grips with it on the weekend. So I'd like to maybe try to get a process in all of our minds to do things a little bit earlier. What I've found in my work, and I don't know, maybe everybody else is different, there's nothing that isn't of an imminent nature that can't wait two weeks. Yes, sir.
Chairman, I didn't disagree as much with anything that you just said, but I ride my bike around the lake all the time, four times around the lake, both Saturday and Sunday. And they have barrels out there that kind of somewhat simulate what's going to happen afterwards. And what I notice, and I notice that I drive through Somerville every day, what people do is they pull their cars out to where the barrels are, when they're coming out of, you know, the, what I call the Lud Wakefield, or the new restaurant down the head of the office park. So as a bike rider, you're going to be coming across that, and they're going to be sticking out on the street trying to get, take that left-hand turn when there's a lot of traffic, and you're riding the bike down there. I think making the road that thin is more dangerous, and I don't like riding there right now as much as I did before, because they've taken a lot of that right away, away from us. So just my observation as a bike rider.
Sure, thank you. Anyone else have anything?
I have a quick question. I think you both mentioned it before. In terms of the subcommittees and whatnot, I don't know what is and is not, I don't think we saw anywhere where we have everybody, understand where everybody's subcommittee is. If you can send out, either you or Steve or whomever can send out a spreadsheet with--
Sure, we can send out what we have currently--
And Julie and Ann had--
Also, with two people leaving, obviously, there are going to be positions opening. We may or may not want to discuss in a future meeting, too, whether we're kind of too tapped out with liaisons. And, you know, do we need to be liaison to as many units as we are? Of course, that's always the problem, is who do we drop? Who's the first, who's the first group that we drop? So maybe if we spread it out amongst the seven, we can get that done, but I'll make a point to send an email consultation with Steve with all the current places, what's open. And we do tend over the, as you guys probably know, certainly Mr. Carney knows, we also tend to shuffle and change a little bit, change it up, you know, sometimes I might have, you know, Bob had fire a couple of years ago. I had it last year, you know, so we can also do some horse trading that way. But that's a good point. Thank you. Yeah, we'll get out some information. And it's, we don't have to lock it all down, you know, definitively next meeting. It's just trying to get the process moving. Counselor Vincent?
Yeah, that reminds me of one other thing, Chair McLean, just take me a minute. Payroll warrants, we need to put that on the agenda for the next meeting. I've been doing that for two years. It's probably good to have somebody else trained to do those warrants, and we can talk about that at our next meeting.
Do we have any immediate volunteers for warrants? Seeing none, that's something that hopefully people will think about.
If I may, so I did it for the three years, poor Counselor Vincent. And so I'm not volunteering to do it again, but I will say, it is, it is not, it is not a crazy amount of work, and I really do compliment, you know, our town accountant, Kevin Gill, does an excellent job of putting the information together, so it is easy to review, the information is clear, it is well-presented, he's able to answer any questions that the warrant signer may have instantaneously and in an expert way. And so, you know, I certainly support Counselor Vincent's desire to step back from it after two years. That's a long commitment, but for anyone else who is thinking about it, you know, it is a very achievable and doable role for a town counselor.
One other thing I would mention is that I have asked Ian Wade, who's the contact on the contracts for the grant, to forward to me, and I think I've CC'd town administrator asking him to send those contracts to all seven of us. I would like us all to review the contracts. This is on the climate grant, so that we can look at what it is we're potentially committing to, and perhaps have a discussion on that at a future meeting as well. Any other comments?
I have one, if that's okay. I don't want to ruin your record.
No, that's fine, Mike. It's not going to last long, I'm sure.
I just wanted to thank the Chair, Chair Chines, for a great year as chair. We really enjoyed working with you in the office and other members of Town Call, and Mike as well. I'm still around Monday mornings at 8:00, 8:30. I'm always there, so you're still welcome to drop by or make a phone call, no problems.
I will probably do that sometimes, because I'll miss seeing you on Monday mornings. But thank you, and I do want to say, first of all, my colleagues, thank you, but, you know, one of the things that you realize after you've served as Chair of this body is just how blessed we are to have, you know, Mr. Mayo and Ms. Dalton working for the town. You know, when you, when you're talking with them every week and just working on, you know, the nitty-gritty of kind of getting set for these meetings, their dedication, their hard work becomes really clear. So Steve and Sherry, I really thank, thank you both for everything that you do. I think too often it goes unrecognized, and it certainly shouldn't.
Doing our jobs, what we need to do.
Anything further? In that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Oh, sorry. Second?
Don't need to vote on that, correct?
You do.
You do? All right, well, I'm learning. All those in favor? Opposed, seven zero. I declare the meeting of the Wakefield Town Council closed as of 8:08 PM.